Live.
Okay, we will reconvene to open session. And Mike, will you report out the action taken in closed session, please?
The board took action in closed session.
To opens.
Yes. So the board took action. A motion was made by trustee non and seconded by trustee Gillies to hire Christina Lundie as the new principal at University Elementary School, and the vote was five zero. The board also took action with a first by trustee non, a second by trustee Wilder mood to hire Kathy Olstead as the new principal at Montavista Elementary School, and that was a five zero. And finally, the board took action to appoint Lindsay Brumham as the new principal at Thomas Page Academy. That was a first by trustee Wiltermood, a second by trustee non, and the vote was five zero. And that is the action that took place in close session.
Thanks, Mike. So then we will. I don't. So the next item is five. But where are public comments on the agenda? I don't see it on the agenda.
They're they're going to be right before number six, right before Board Services.
Okay, so we will insert all and assuming them, you know, public comments are for everything, right?
Correct.
All right. Okay, so we will go to item five, Educational Services Chromebook Purchase to Support Distance Learning.
And so we are coming back once again to request additional Chromebook purchases. And right now, Senate Bill ninety-eight has come out. It's also ed code four three five oh nine. That is going to require districts to write a learning continuity and attendance plan, not to be confused with the LCAP, even though they use the same acronyms, which was really fun. So that we are going to have to ensure that all of our students have access to technology. And so in order to do that, we are coming back to request an additional thousand Chromebooks, which will basically bring us to our district to a one-to-one district, which will help standardize curriculum. We will know teachers will be able to address all students' learning needs because we will know every student has a device. And so again, we're coming back to you for an additional one thousand Chromebooks.
And the the good thing about this is, is while we had those dollars budgeted in the bond fund to purchase additional technology, we're able to use those federal dollars that we have to utilize by December the thirty-first to purchase this set of Chromebooks. So there's there's going to be, we're going to be able to leave the bond dollars alone, and we're going to be able to take those federal dollars and use them what they're intended for to purchase additional technology for our students.
Thanks. Any questions?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion then? To purchase the Chromebooks for distant learning?
Tell me.
May I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thanks, Joe. Hi. Motion carried. Five zero. Okay, so now, before going to six for Board Services update, planning for the twenty twenty twenty-one reopening of schools, we have a number of comments that we're staff is going to read to us, so we're open, and thank you for those comments, and we'll go forward and listen to those now.
Okay, I'm going to start, and we'll be sharing the reading of the comments. I'll start, and then my Dr. Wattenpaw, as well as Dr. Mike, will be helping me with that reading. Anyway, the first one is twenty twenty sucks. I hate online distance learning. I don't care what precautions you take. Just open school up in the fall, please. And that came from Madison Caldwell. While I am eager, as always, to teach, like, to meet my new group of students next month, I am very concerned about implications regarding my health and the health of my coworkers in the face of COVID nineteen. Should we be working onsite? As we try to picture the on upcoming school year, I would like to hear the reinsurance as to my safety in the classroom. But I have serious doubts about the feasibility about being in the classroom. The past spring, everyone rose to the challenge of emergency remote teaching in a very oppressive way. However, I was, it was exhausting and a bit demoralizing to have to figure out how to teach remotely on my own. As we looked at the possibility of continuing with distance teaching, I beg that our district focuses on the best distance teaching practices from around the world, organizes resources, and finds training that will help us engage our students as much as possible. Suki Winship.
Dr. Perez, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So that none of us lose our voices. How about if we just alternate as we go through?
Perfect.
And just as a reminder, we do not take anonymous comments, and so the next one, we would not be reading.
Can you list the name first before you read the comments, so we know who it's from?
Okay, perfect.
Read the comment, please.
So I'll go on. The next comment is from Mia in Denali. As a member of the CRP USD staff and a parent, I would like the school board to consider the difficulty that distance learning presents. As a full-time working parent, I found it very difficult to work full-time and homeschool my son. I don't want to expose vulnerable people, but at the same time, I don't want my son exposed to different populations if he had to go to school part-time and some type of daycare part-time. As a single parent, I can't afford not to work and can't pay for private daycare several days a week. I also don't feel I am serving my youngest students well via only distance learning. I support the use of virus mitigation measures, but I feel it is a disservice to my students not to see them in person, at least part-time. I also know that the vast majority of our low socioeconomic students are not receiving a quality or equal education via distance learning. I urge the board to consider flexibility in meeting our staff's needs in order to best serve the students and their families.
The next one is from Sophia Corbett. I am eager to return to the classroom to teach my students in person. I feel that the social emotional impact on our students' well-being is a greater risk than the virus. I support my colleagues who do not feel comfortable returning to the classroom to teach.
Vivian Winfrey, second grade teacher at Montavista. Members of the board, I am the teacher at Montavista, and I've been trying to imagine what my school day would look like if I required to return to campus in person in August, masked up and donning my face shield. I might greet students that arrive on campus and point out, point a thermometer that looks disturbingly like a gun at their forehead while trying to get them to recognize me and smile as hard as I can from my eyes. Already, maybe I have I've had chastised a few students for getting too close to each other and asked a parent for help to put on a mask. After this impersonal punitive start, I am not sure where I meet my students lined up at the back blacktop like a normal seems wrong and impossible to distance properly. Where will we ask them to wait until eight ten P M? Eight, eight, ten. Putting that aside, pretend we make into, make it into a classroom very slowly from a line where students are walking six feet apart, that will take a lot of teaching. Wait, all of these safety precautions will take a crazy amount of time to teach and enforce time that we will not be teaching content. Pre-COVID, I started each day in my classroom with a group greeting, students practice shaking hands, making eye contact, and calling each other by name while we gathered in a circle. That circle didn't fit too well before we had the six feet apart. I don't even think I can make the circle with my students fit in the classroom walls with the distance guidelines. The students will be so far away, I couldn't hear them through their masks anyways. So the greeting is out. One of my many important social moments that will have to be erased, I guess they will go onto their desk, their personal, their personal little space where they will be stuck for the entire day. But wait, I don't have desks in my classroom, only tables. Will the district get me desks instead? Will I ever be able to get my tables back if they take them? I guess we would start doing blueprints. I would have to trust that the students are participating since I can't see their mouths move over their masks. Now time to read aloud. It usually will gather so close that everyone can see, and it's nice and cozy. I guess I'll just have to to project it on the screen instead. Wait a minute, this is starting to feel a bit like read alouds during distance learning. In fact, even though we are in the same room, I actually will have less contact with individual students than I did over the video conferencing in the spring. At this point in my day, I will probably see, feel so demoralized that the children and students I did will will feel. What? What will the experiences of the children be? Teachers shielded from them, constant nagging about staying away from friends, limited breaks, and oh, I don't forget, I don't forget you need to learn. Perhaps I don't have the imagination to envision a joyful learning classroom under the constant, the current circumstances, the very measure that we put in place. Keep everyone safe with fundamentally degrade the important connections required for successful, successful education. I can't wait to see my students again, but I fear that I will not be able to withstand the emotional toll on me that I've required to enforce safety measures that are contrary to the positive learning environment and make the most rewarding part of teaching. The relationship is nonexistent if we are forced to returning to campus in August. We are forcing ourselves to make trade-offs that are potentially life life, life altering and unknown circumstances. How can I be effective to educate children under these circumstances? A large body of evidence. I'm sorry, a large tribute to the classroom environment to be important and not and if not important components of successful learning. And if the learning environment, learning will not happen, then why even be there? Please ask yourselves, what is the experience of the children to be? Please make a stand to protect teachers, students in the community, and refuse to open schools until there have been fourteen fourteen days of no cases in Sonoma County.
The next comment is from Shannon Maloney. Hello, I'm a parent of an awesome boy heading into second grade. My son is a mainstream special ed student with a visual impairment and ADHD. The end of last year was trying to save the lease for both my son and myself. I was deemed an essential worker through the pandemic and worked through the distance learning last year. My partner also worked full-time. I'm a chef in a restaurant and trying to come home to teach my child with ADHD at night and raise two toddlers was a battle. How are we to do this next year? I submitted an application for emergency YMCA childcare for essential workers and was denied because I wasn't a healthcare worker, doctor, or nurse. Those jobs that can afford childcare. My aging parents then were forced to be exposed in order to watch the kids while we were at work, both of which were unable to navigate the computer well enough to do the distance learning and watch two more toddlers at the same time. What are families like mine supposed to do next year? My partner has two children in kindergarten and second grade, two going for to go to different schools. Are we to work full-time and teach three separate classes? Are we going to be compensated financially? We are now forced to pay for childcare, school supplies, and backup work in a recession where we are all blessed to still have jobs. What about the children? My son has a visual impairment and cannot sit through hours of distance learning on a screen. Try teaching a young boy coming down from his ADHD medicine. As a lower middle-class income to work working mother, I feel forgotten. What are we to do? There needs to be uniformity between teachers and grades and the same platform for distant learning, distance learning for all schools in the district. Parents should always know that what the other parents in their class. So if we band together to give each other help, we need one platform like Google Classroom for all classes and grades in the district. Thank you.
The next one is from Cindy Savage Hopkin. Members of the board, I'm writing to you regarding the reopening of schools. I am an educator of twenty-four years in this district, and I love my job. However, it is not my job to provide childcare. It is my job, it is my job to educate children in academics. Granted, I often need to help them navigate social and emotional situations, but always the focus is on learning. I miss being with my students. Regardless, I would like to see all of us come out of this pandemic healthy and not grieving the loss of a loved one. Even though some families are having struggles with childcare, reopening schools is not the answer without with our current situation, and it is logistically not safe, while distance learning is safe and doable. Sonoma County's numbers are spiking. Many people still will not wear masks or practice social distancing. Classrooms are petri dishes in normal conditions. Handwashing, sanitizing, most effective cleaners, i.e. Lysol wipes are not legal in classrooms, are time-consuming activities that take away from learning time. Janitorial and food service staff would have to be increased to provide some protection. Everyone is vulnerable to COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen knows no boundaries. All ages and ethnicities have been infected and some have died. We are seeing more children contracting the virus. Even if you do not die from the virus, you may have lifelong lung and heart issues. As of July fourth, there were only five ICU beds left in the county and seventy ventilators. The safety of students and staff must be our first priority. There has been discussion that in-person learning is more effective. This is true, but why? One part of an effective classroom is proximity. Teachers move about the room all day, encouraging students to try, helping them become proficient at a task, standing close to a student to help them refocus on the lesson. This is not possible from six feet away. Another very effective part of a classroom is the collaboration between students. This process deepens their understanding of curriculum, improves their thinking, and strengthens their communication skills. This collaboration cannot happen while maintaining six feet social distancing. Expecting a child to maintain six feet apart and wearing a mask all day is unrealistic. Expecting a child to learn when they are afraid is impossible. Some families will follow guidelines and social distancing, and others will not. We have no control over who does and does not practice mask-wearing, social distancing, and not gathering in large groups. Children from homes that do not follow protocols put other children and staff at risk. What will happen when a child becomes sick and learns that one of his or her classmates or their families gets sick and dies? They will have to live with that for the rest of their lives. Opening school with distance learning is the safe and responsible thing to do. Last year with a few, few days notice, I was able to provide my students with meaningful learning experiences. I had all but one student from my class regularly participate. Now I would have planning time and can be more organized. Working together, we can find dynamic ways to deliver robust and engaging curriculum. We can work with children in small groups. We can meet with parents and support their efforts with the children. We can find ways for children to work collaboratively. We can provide access to virtual field trips. Most of all, we can provide an education in a safe environment where students are able to learn. It is time to change the conversation to how to provide the best distance learning we can. Asking staff and students to return to a situation, even with modifications, that is unsafe is unacceptable. Respectfully submitted.
I'm sorry, Julie, who was that from?
Cindy Savage Hopkin.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
The next public comment is from.
I, I, yeah, I can continue. It's the other document.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, no, Ellen Jun Shalat, Viani, sorry if I'm butchering the name, my apologies. Dear trustees, thank you for the opportunity to tell you how I feel about the upcoming school year. I teach at Richard Crane, so I'm preparing for the new, the new year now. The teachers in our district did an amazing job of keeping things going last spring. However, I am concerned that the expectations were way too high now. I have read my versions of what a hybrid model consists of. Please don't choose one that has teachers teaching in person and online at the same time on the same day. Distance learning takes longer to deliver instruction and way more time is needed to plan. All this time, I don't feel it's safe to be back in the classroom. I haven't had enough evidence of any of us, teachers, staff, and students will be walking into a safe environment. There is no way to make sure people are following safety guidelines outside of a school, which means we can't even somewhat, somewhat sure the virus isn't going to going to school in any great numbers. We need a plan that covers all possible scenarios. Please approach reopening with a very cautious eye. Thank you.
The next public comment is from Deb McCampbell. Dear President Brown, trustee non, trustee Gillies, trustee Wiltermood, trustee Chimino, superintendent Perez, and assistant superintendent Senior. My name is Deb McCampbell, and I teach at Montavista Elementary School. I've been a CRP USD employee for seventeen years. I'm writing to ask that you decide to make our twenty twenty twenty-one school year begin with distance learning. Simply put, I don't know how my safety, the safety of my staff, and the safety of my students can be guaranteed. I know you have discussed importance of safety at previous board meetings, and for that, I thank you. I appreciate your support and caring for all of us. I'd like you to continue to make that effort by deciding tonight to have our year begin with at-home distance learning. As a mother of two CRP USD students, I know how much I'd love for my children to go back into the classroom and see their friends and teachers. However, I'm deeply concerned for their safety and don't feel that their safety can be guaranteed unless kept at home. Thank you for your hard work and dedication this summer. I've been listening to the board meetings from home and appreciate the conversations that have been had about the safety of our students and community members. Thank you.
The next comment is from Joan Newcomb. I applaud all staff and families in our district for working so hard to support the students as best as we can during this unprecedented time. Although, as a teacher, I am chomping at the bit to get back to my classroom in a sense of normalcy, I ask that we consider the health and safety of students and staff before all other issues. The start of this new school year is nearly upon us, and yet the spread of COVID is rising rapidly in our community with deaths more than doubling last week. Although distance learning is not the best form of education, I suggest we begin our year online until we are better prepared at our sites to keep our precious students, their families, and staff safe from risk of contagion and spread. I understand the hardship that this brings for many, but after many years in the classroom, I have seen how the smallest bugs spreads like wildfire, and I'm concerned the probability of sudden exit to all online scenarios that order the county health department has happened in March is more disruptive than setting up a regular routine for students and families.
Next comment is from Travis. Hello, I will have three children attending Katani River Park Schools in the fall. One in kindergarten and two in second grade, two, two second grade attending and two different schools. I have many concerns since two have special needs. There is no consistency in platforms used for distance learning between schools and classes. How are we to work ninety-five plus hours a week between the two of us, two of us parents and teach three classes? Are we going to be financially compensated for having to do the teaching supplies and searching desperately for cheap childcare since we both are essential workers? There is a social and economic impact to all of this. Our families, our, our family has a choice between paying food and rent and giving your children a proper education. If a parent has to quite go on, go on, paid family leave to teach children in the school district, going to financial compensate the parents for the forty percent pay cut, that means the difference between food on the table and potential homelessness? What about single parents? Please feel free to answer these questions directly.
The next public comment is from Alex Moore's. If schools reopen, will there be a list of protocols for teachers and students? For example, will everyone have their temperatures taken each morning? What is the highest temp that would send a teacher or student home? Who administer the temperature checks? What happens when a student or teacher tests positive? A family member of a student or a teacher? Will teachers be required to provide on top line learning for students who choose to stay home? If we reopen part-time, will teachers be required to fulfill in-class and online learning for students? If we are focusing on in-class learning, will we still be trained for more rigorous standards for online learning and training? If we're doing online, will attendance be required? How do teachers take attendance? What's the district doing now to make classrooms safe? Masks should be required, right? New HVAC systems, Plexiglas dividers, many classrooms have tables instead of desks, and we've invested in flexible seating. How are tables and desks supposed to be utilized? How often will the custodians clean the classroom? What will custodians clean every day? Recession rules, lunch protocols, what happens if a teacher is sick? Will there be substitute teachers? All of these should be addressed in writing and followed strictly.
Next comment is from Julia. As a single mother of three, this pandemic has been so terrible. From moving to sheltering in place to distance learning with my kids to working full-time remotely, it's been the most difficult time in my life. I am so torn over the school topic. It would be so easy to just send my kids back to school every day while I continued to work full-time. That would relieve so much stress, but COVID nineteen. I am a nurse, luckily not on the front lines with COVID patients, but I was put in charge of all things COVID-related at my work, so I know all about this insane pandemic. I know that children should not be heading back to school. Even though it would be easier on me, it just isn't worth it. I don't want to put my kids at risk. I don't want to put other kids at risk. I don't want to put teachers and school staff at risk, and I don't want to put their families at risk. Even a hybrid model would be terrible, in my opinion. It would be too much chaos for the kids, too much chaos for the teachers in the school. It would be too much chaos on the healthcare system because positive infections will go up. Distance remote learning is the best option overall, not ideal, not perfect, but given that all that's going on in this world, it's the best option for all involved. It breaks my heart to even say that because my kids, all kids, are so social, and they miss their friends. They miss their teachers. They miss their school. They really want to go back to school, but it's not practical at this point. Please stick with distance learning. We need to maintain distance for everyone.
Next comment is from Sarah. I would prefer my child to continue with distance learning, distant, distance learning slash online for the first semester to give teachers time to focus on one planning method and allow the school to monitor members of COVID before reopening.
The next public comment is from Tracy C. I understand that social distancing is not ideal. Teachers love to be with their kids, and this has been really hard on them as well. However, we really need to consider what we are asking of our teachers if we send our kids back to school in any form. I understand that essential workers are at work. I feel the difference with schools is the amount of time spent in the classroom and an unrealistic idea of social distancing space in a closed space. They say length of time and exposure plays into the risk of contracting COVID. Think about how many times parents have sent their kids to school sick or with lice or other contagious things and not notified the school. Think about how many people are not being safe or wearing masks. This type of behavior only increases the risk in a school setting. I feel like essential workers have a choice of where they send their schools while they work the lesson or somewhat control their risks. Small cohorts, family watching them, et cetera. This would not be the same for the school setting since the majority of kids would be expected to attend in-person, only if any person options decided. Teachers would need to consider where to put their students and have no real control over limiting their exposure. Even with the varied scheduling of cohorts, the teachers would see, would see all students on the very days. The idea of kids going back to school is become is because of learning loss. Schools have limited time to prepare for social distancing previously. This time around, if a decision is made soon, they have more time to prepare. Teachers and students need to interact in person to really reinforce learning. This won't happen with the protocols that must be in place. So what's the point of doing in-class learning if the benefit is of that is eliminated? Also, we are about to enter in flu season as well. This adds to the possibility of weakened immune systems. What is the contingent, contiguous plan if we open schools and then a COVID outbreak happens? This seems like an awful lot of what ifs. Why not continue social distancing through the Christmas break and have a plan to return in January if the numbers are good? Regardless of what decision you make, there will be parents who refuse to send their children to school. What options will they have? Thank you for your time.
Next one is from Anna Fargo Gordon. Whether distance learning or hybrid, I think our students need consistency and a regular schedule. If classes are held virtually as if they were in person, each day hold classes via Google Meet, Google Classroom for virtual teaching, same classes and times as if a person had done virtually, there will be much more consistency, similar to online courses we can take. Same can be done hybrid if that was an option. It would take some planning, but I think it's possible. Constructional assistants, paraprofessionals would be available for breakout groups. Maybe I'm dreaming. Students sit at desks or tables in the classroom and get taught same, same classes, same days of the weeks. I think this can be done virtually or hybrid, same school hours. It doesn't have to be so complicated. Yes, there are logistics that need to be worked out.
Next comment. Oh, I got. No, that's okay. Sorry. Is Erin DeCleva. I understand the unique challenges facing districts as they upgrade, as they grapple with what to do regarding reopening of schools. However, for working parents and for teachers in the district with elementary aged children, I am extremely worried about the impact of whatever decision is made at the district level on the families. If elementary schools end up doing a hybrid schedule, where is my first, first grader only goes to school physically two to three days a week, he doesn't evaporate the other days of the week. How am I going to reconcile a schedule with whatever schedule I end up teaching at Tech, Tech High School? The only solution with will be, will be childcare, which defeats the purpose of him being in a cohort at school. So what will be my way forward? Bottom line, there is a need to be solutions for working parents and for school-aged children who cannot stay at home by themselves, and the district cannot ignore this and make a plan in a vacuum, assuring everyone will figure out their, figure out their end out.
The next public comment is from Cassandra Wilcox. My name is Cassandra Wilcox, and I'm a teacher at Montavista Elementary School. As August quickly approaches, teachers everywhere grappling with the idea that we might be returning to school. As August quickly approaches, teachers everywhere grappling with the idea that we might be returning to school. Normally, this idea excites teachers. We begin to purchase supplies for each student as we happily think about the new community we'll be creating in the coming school year. Instead, I, as I walk through Target, the section with the bold "Back to School" sign fills me with some sense of apprehension. While this apprehension stems from thoughts are sending my own daughter back to school, it's also the idea that I'll be going back as well. My classroom is built on relationships and building that community between the students. As I've moved towards imagining some of the options for opening school, I find it difficult to imagine building a relationship on inconsistency and fear. Inconsistency built on a schedule that is different almost every day and fear that is promoted by face shields, masks and temperature checks at the door. While distance learning is not ideal, it does provide consistency that children and in many cases, parents need. It will eliminate potential fears, allowing students to continue with what has been the status quo since the beginning of shelter-in-place orders. As you move towards making impactful decisions with long-term effects, I want you to please visualize your child or any other loved one in that situation. Does it seem worth it to open schools then? Protect the staff, students and families by refusing to open school until there are 14 days of no new cases in Sonoma County. Thank you.
Next comment is from Jen Farnsworth. As much as I wasn't a fan of distance learning, I feel like if the school board can't guarantee our children's safety on campus, especially the younger kids who can't manage a mask safely, then they cannot be in the classrooms. There is too much exposure to various home life. It will spread like lice.
Mike, can you continue?
Certainly. The next comment is from Melody Hendricks. I feel that SDC, SDC classes have fewer students, average of 10 students, should have the opportunity to start the school year in school. SDC faces more challenges with distance learning. With fewer students, we can distance easier than larger classes.
The next one is from Danielle. Do we know how many teachers are willing to be on campus and how many are not? If we were to offer a hybrid of those with medical needs to stay home and have a dedicated teacher for those classes versus having the staff to hold on-campus classes for those who are willing to follow any safety plan for on-campus learning? Knowing if we would even have the staff would play a big role in how we proceed as a community. Why are we okay with the double standard of only certain adults going back to work, but that leaves a huge discrepancy between grade level standards and what is being taught? What is the district's plan to circumvent the huge emotional toll that this is taking on its students who are already in a vulnerable state, especially when they are entering a higher grade and are severely behind backslid? Students are harsh critics of themselves, no matter how much parents try to lift them up. Most students get something out of school that cannot be taught. They get a sense of community, and right now, all they are receiving is how to isolate. A huge amount of parents are working and not able to accommodate a distance learning schedule over meetings online, nor is the responsibility of the daycare facility to teach, get the students online. Most daycares will not have the means or want that responsibility as we grow near the fall, and we'll be seeing a scramble of trying to find care. This is our students' education. It is their future that, and they should have a say. Do a one teacher per grade online for parents who want to distance learn and the rest on campus. Kinder will have to be broken up into eight, 20 to 11, and 12, 20 to three to accommodate any distance and cleaning. Yes, getting kids to not mess with masks is going to be hard, but if they want to be on campus, they will learn to deal with it. We teach to be flexible. We do not leave them feeling abandoned and feeling stupid because they struggle with the lessons and lack of technology knowledge before being thrown into this. We need to do better regardless of how each person personally feels. It is their time, not ours. They are only young for so long, and we need to step up. We have to.
Next comment is from EC Shervanen. Please keep our staff and students safe and keep in mind the ever-changing pandemic. A hybrid model for returning to school at this moment with classes reduced for physical distancing, some online teaching in addition to other models for staff and students to be able to work from home entirely is the best and most flexible model for this fluid situation. Almost feel safe in order for this to work.
Next comment is from Colleen Dunaway. I am very concerned regarding the return to classrooms for teachers and support staff. As a veteran teacher of 25 years, all within CRP USD, I am writing to you today to express my deepest concern for unnecessary return to the workplace. Our numbers in California are spiking, and I know that our families are not taking the proper protocols. Our numbers of confirmed cases are rising due to infections. We are testing more, but we are also using fewer precautions. I have witnessed this as I am in the community. I can tell you that my classroom is usually filled with healthy kids the first two weeks of school, and that's it. Someone is always sick from then on. We do not have the amount of PPE or updated facilities to do this safely. I wish we had updated classrooms and furniture. I wish our restrooms, sinks and fountains could accommodate the need, however, they can't. We have not put money into our infrastructure, and this can be seen as you drive by our aging facilities. Some have received new roofs and new furniture. My site has not. The veteran teachers are in the mid-40s and up, and CRP USD has invested in their staff infrastructure and its technology infrastructure. We have not put money into our facilities infrastructure in equitable manner. But what we will need to do in a safe manner is simply not feasible. My class was hit hard with the virus in January and in February. I was able to keep the door open as our California drought was still in full swing and the weather was fair. I am sincerely worried about transmission of this virus to the staff and from child to child, household to household. I fear the liability, physical and monetary, is too great. I do not see the value in risking human lives. I have two daughters at home who understand the risk involved returning to classrooms. One is moving to homeschool through her high school. The other is reducing her college courses and postponing her transfer. My husband, who is Director of Human Services for the county, is reducing our risk by working from home two days a week and following all safety measures as given by the county. If we are doing our part, how can we be guaranteed that parents, daycares and children are doing theirs? We can't. My daughters share with me how other students and young adults are gathering a mask and sharing drinks or vaping materials. We know what to do to stay safe, and we will make the needed sacrifice. We have stamina and perseverance. However, we recognize that some in our communities lack those skills. I believe the risk is much greater than the payoff, and until there is a vaccine, we should hold off. Schools were originally created to socialize children. Education came secondhand. We can plan plenty in advance. Give us a plan ahead of time. Let's prepare our online classrooms and syllabus. Let us design our online coursework, and let's get this show on the road. Districts are darn near broke and asking for bonds and measures to cover supplies and facilities is over. We cannot afford, we cannot afford lawsuits or lives. Feed the students, provide old-school workbooks, provide materials that we have, but let's plan for it and get on with it. It's just not safe. Please protect your workforce. You've created it. You've put a lot of money and time into my own 25-year career. It would be detrimental to lose the qualified teaching staff that you've built from one, for, that you have built for one, one decision to open too soon. I care about my district as I have been here since 1995. I've been through two school closures and lost my room to arson while a new teacher at Crane. I recently lost one of my first Kinder students to COVID. He reached out during COVID, and we were able to connect. He must have been close to 30 years old. Thank you for your time. I only come to the board during important moments, the first school closure and now. However, I do watch, and I'm grateful for the work that you do. Thank you for your continued support.
Julia, the next two. The next comment is from Maria Penalosa. I would like to know why interim superintendent Wattenpaugh is still on the payroll when the district has hired a qualified replacement. The next comment is from Kiyoko Nikano. Entering my 17th year in this district, I know how truly important building that community relationship is with students. It's the foundation for engagement, trust and discipline, and the key to powerful teaching. Being with my students is my favorite thing about teaching, seeing their faces, hearing their voices and watching them solve problems and discover new ideas. There is nothing I want more than to hug my students, my kids. However, with all that said, early August is not that far off, and I don't foresee any big changes with COVID-19. I'm left with so many questions. This new year, I don't see how it'd be physically possible to distance six feet apart 13 students. Never mind, for that matter, 26 students at four feet. How will students have lunch at their desks? Where will teachers be? We teachers can't have lunch in our small staff room six feet apart. Will students be able to play outside? If we attempt a hybrid model, where will students not in class be? Will parents have childcare? There are so many questions that I don't know the answers or feel I know enough to advocate for any model of schooling. Can we build our relationships online? I think yes. Is that the best model? I don't know. I only know it's better to be safe, and at this time, staying home is safe.
Next message is from Chris Winter. Hello, I hope this message finds you healthy and well. I teach elementary special ed in a class geared toward our more behavioral kiddos. I have concerns about returning to school in regards to social distancing, scheduling, the social emotional health of my students who are already dealing with these kinds of problems. Also, I have major concerns about the health of my kiddos and my staff. We work closely and in groups. I don't know how this would be possible with social distancing in place. My other major concern is that we will be working with more severe behaviors and proximity would pose a challenge. I would be open to trying a staggered work schedule or a hybrid model if there is a drop in the diagnosis in our county. If the numbers of COVID remain on the current trend, I have serious doubts about returning in fall to teach in person. I hope this is helpful. I know we will make it through this respectfully.
The next public comment is from Nancy Ellis, a teacher at Ranch Katati High School. Dear Board of Trustees, I'm a special ed teacher at Ranch Katati High School and a former social worker. In my four years at Ranch Katati, I've learned that my job encompasses both subject matter teaching and student support, separate from the academic curriculum. My students need plenty of social work support as well as academic support. Our current pandemic situation adds significantly to the stress level of all of us, students, staff, parents and teachers especially. As more and more information regarding the COVID disease and its various expressions and modes of transmission become better understood, anticipating spending seven hours each day and 35 hours each week students in my classroom becomes increasingly untenable. For example, number one, our classrooms have been, have notoriously poor HVAC systems. Ventilation to our classrooms is inadequate in the best of times. Recent research indicates that a large enough viral load to cause an infection in a healthy person can happen in as little as 20 minutes of exposure in indoor settings such as a classroom. Number two, properly wearing an effective mask increases the time it takes to accumulate a deadly viral load. However, when a teacher is exposed to potential virus spreaders, 35 hours a week in the classroom, a chance of infection is greatly increased over the course of an academic quarter. Additionally, it is doubtful that high school students can be counted on to wear masks 100% of the time they're in a classroom. Number three, recent research shows that checking the temperature of people as a means of identifying potential COVID-19 carriers is ineffective. A significant fraction of COVID cases are asymptomatic to the extent that no fever is detectable. Screening people with a thermometer as they come onto campus will not be an effective strategy for preventing the spread of the virus in our classrooms. Number four, air filtration systems, HEPA filters and UV3 light that can effectively eliminate virus particles from the air inside a classroom are available. Such devices can reduce the virus load in the air of a classroom to negligible levels. They are expensive. Many of my students live very stressful lives in normal times, and the COVID-19 pandemic increases the stress. Most of my students are parts of recognized high-risk demographic groups. They're extremely vulnerable to COVID-19 infections without having to go to school and sit in poorly ventilated classrooms six hours each day. Based on my experience during the spring 2020 quarter, most of my students can master the academic material as effectively at home as they can at school. I don't think any theoretical improved academic performance in a regular classroom setting is worth the increased risk of infection for my students, my colleagues and myself. I also have a family at home who belong to high-risk groups for the COVID virus. I don't want to bring the virus home with me from school. Please start the 2020-21 school year in distance learning mode. We can transition to a hybrid or regular system when it's safe. If it's not safe now, it's not safe now, nor will it be safe in August. Sincerely.
Next comment is from Kristen Ballard. Members of the board, for the last two years I've taught at Richard Crane, however, this year I'm making the switch to special education. I'll be teaching one of the SDC classes at Montavista. When I found out that the opportunity for me to switch to special education, stay within the district was possible, I was so excited and jumped right on that opportunity. I was looking forward to starting the year off at Montavista with my new class and all the school year's events. However, my plans were based on COVID-19 dwindling away. As we all now know, this is not the case. Now I cannot imagine starting the year with kindergartners and first graders in a classroom where they have to maintain social distance, not share toys or materials and have to stay in the classroom all day. As an educator, my number one job above everything else is to keep my students safe. I'm having a hard time picturing any scenario where we are in the classroom where I can keep my students and paraprofessionals completely safe from COVID-19. Sure, it's difficult in regular circumstances with the common cold or any other sickness that travels through classrooms. However, as we know, COVID-19 has many unknowns. It is an aggressive virus. I've spoke with many educators, both new and experienced. We have discussed the fact that some of the older faculty members have underlying health conditions and now, and how returning in person puts them at an even greater risk. While I'm a younger teacher in the district and very healthy, I too am extremely fearful of contracting the virus because I have an autoimmune disease. I regret myself contracting the virus and not being able to teach my students. I worry about being asymptomatic and not knowing that I have the virus and then infecting others because of the expectations of being in person in a kindergarten, first grade classroom that is near impossible to have everyone constantly socially distanced in. I have a lot of worry, and I have to speak up because I have to look out for my wellbeing also. In March, we were asked to make the switch to distance learning. I spent my entire two-week spring break researching what I could do to make it work for my families, and the responses I received were amazing. There was great progress made by the students. With experience and the resources out there, distance learning can be effective. I fear that if we go back in person, we will out again within a couple of weeks, hindering our students' ability to learn effectively. And at that point, there will be even more traumatic, more trauma for students and risk among community members being infected. I ask that you please consider the concerns being voiced and the repercussions going back in August could have. Please stand to protect the students, teachers and community by refusing to open the schools in August and only allowing distance learning until we see little to no cases in Sonoma County respectfully.
The next public comment is from Dr. Steven Lewis. Dear Board of Trustees, I'm writing to urge you to begin the 2020-21 academic year of CRP USD in distance learning mode. All indications to date indicate that it will not be safe to open the school year in a hybrid or normal mode in August, and that it would put the safety and health of teachers, students, staff and parents at risk to do so while the COVID-19 virus is still infecting the population of Sonoma County and Rana Park Katati areas. Having recently retired from a 45-year academic career as a university professor and academic dean, I can evaluate opening the coming academic year from the perspective of classroom educator and as an academic administrator. In my judgment, it is unwise from both an academic perspective and from a public health perspective to have students in classrooms at this time. Academically, my experience in the classroom indicates that students will break down into, into easily anticipated cohorts during distance learning that can be anticipated based, based on the basis of past performance in normal classroom settings. Simply stated, the good students before the COVID-19 pandemic will continue to perform well in distance learning mode and will not suffer, will suffer no academic ill effects from not being in the classroom if they have contact with their teachers. Sadly, the students who performed poorly in the classroom before the COVID pandemic will perform slightly similarly in distance learning mode. Granted, there's a small cohort that exists between the two groups described above, and they might suffer from not being in the classroom, but the health and community inside and outside of the classroom is in jeopardy. If bars, restaurants and churches are effective settings for the spread of COVID virus, then so are classrooms. The two factors that strongly affect the spread of the virus from person to person are distance and time. A well-known guideline of six-foot physical distancing is reduced in effectiveness when the time of exposure to an infected individual increases. A viral load can be inhaled from an infected person in a classroom setting in as little as 20 minutes. Students are exposed to each other in the classroom for approximately six hours per day, and teachers are exposed in the classroom for the same duration. It is not a matter of if Katati Rana Park classrooms will be at center of virus transmission, but when COVID infections will be traced to CRP USD schools. Speaking from the perspective of a former college science dean, it will be virtually impossible to adequately safeguard students, staff and teachers from being infected on your campuses with the realistic budget constraints. The only thing that can be done to adequately protect the students, families and teachers and staff of CRP USD from the COVID virus is to open the 2020-21 academic year in distance learning mode. Anything else would be irresponsible. Sincerely.
Next comment is from Yvonne Covert. Dear Board of Trustees, as an elementary teacher at Evergreen School, I know the best educational setting for students is in the classroom. I value the relationships and rapport that comes from personal contact. I also know that the health and wellbeing of my students is at the forefront on my job as a teacher. In Sonoma County, the virus is on the rise, and the Press Democrat published an article on Monday reporting scientific differences in opinion and how the virus travels. I know you will keep the health of the district's students and staff as your top priority in your decision on how school will resume. Perhaps our elementary schools can start with distance learning, but offer childcare and empty classrooms. Maybe Santa Rosa and Petaluma families would utilize a provided daycare as well. You are tasked with a challenging decision, but with fire season around the corner, it seems that distance learning with childcare options could help us safely meet more needs of our families.
The next public comment is anonymous, and so we will not read that. Next one, dear, this one is from Emily King. Good evening. My name is Emily King, and I'm the new president of the Rana Park Katati Educators Association. I look forward to getting to know all the trustees and working together to ensure the health and safety of all our students and staff as we navigate these challenging times. I would like to first of all acknowledge and thank the district administration for their efforts to work collaboratively with our union to develop a plan for the coming school year. Our bargaining team met with Dr. Perez, Dr. Senior and Karen Tedesco yesterday. We are anxious to extend the memorandum of understanding so that our members of, members at Richard Crane have protection as well as clear expectations as the school year begins for them next week. We will also be working We will also be working on rolling out a more thorough MOU that addresses the various possible learning models prior to the start of the traditional school year in August. As you know, our teachers and staff did a superb job of switching gears and adopting the distance learning model in March. They provided students a sense of normalcy in a chaotic time, supported and reassured worried parents, and came up with innovative lessons and ideas using new platforms and technologies. As educators, we would like nothing more than to be in the classroom engaging with our students. However, as members of the community, we also must strive to keep ourselves and our loved ones safe. In talking with my fellow educators, we've shared concerns about the rising number of cases of COVID nineteen, the vague and continually changing expectations from the state and county officials, and the availability of PPE for staff and students. As a parent of a student in the district, I understand the challenges of working from home and the desire for students to return to campus. However, I want you to be aware that the unknowns of this situation are making some of our staff increasingly anxious. I ask that any decision you make takes into consideration the vulnerability of students as well as teachers and staff. We want to partner with the district. We want to do our job and do them well. But we want to, we don't want to put our families and our, excuse me. We don't want to put our families and our lives at risk anymore than we need to. Thank you for all you do for our community. Sincerely.
The next comment is from Christie Vidaloni. Concerned safety of students and staff. Needs training about protocols for COVID nineteen. Time to prepare for new school year changes. I'll do the next one. Take a break here. Let's see. Okay, this comment, give me one second. I'm frozen. Um, this one, sorry, guys. Said I was gonna do the next one here. Um, aloha and mahalo, Nui, for allowing public comment on this matter. I will get right into it with some topics that have come up in many teacher forums. Hazard pay. Teacher, school, staff were left off of the Heroes and Cares Act due to distance learning and summer break. This is no longer the case. Hazard pay must be on the table for return face-to-face in any capacity. Sick leave. Educators currently get ten days personal leave. If any staff member has exposure, possible exposure, or a positive test result to COVID nineteen and need to quarantine, or a family member they must care for due to the above three reasons, they will not only not lose all their sick leave, but will not be held accountable for paying for themselves beyond the ten days as is current practice. If an educator is able to work from home due to no symptoms but must quarantine, this must be considered. misunderstood supervision is needed at the school and the classroom, but teachers have proven that they can teach from home if able to. This must be considered and everyone held harmless in losing sick days. Students, if not feeling well, should not be, should be allowed. Students, if not feeling well, should be allowed to tune in somehow to work they are missing. Perhaps they are well enough to watch the lesson online, Zoom, et cetera, from home, but can't be at school. We would prefer anyone with a fever, cough, runny nose, et cetera, to remain home. If a student has to be out sick, would they be allowed to come to school the other cohort days? This is speaking of a hybrid schedule where students come Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. Testing, weekly COVID nineteen testing for all staff. We are the constants on campus if a hybrid schedule is put into place. We are exposed to all students. We need an easy way to be tested that doesn't require us to make appointments and miss more school, take more leave, since this is a major line of defense. Childcare. What do parents with young children do if their kids are on hybrid schedule and need supervision at home two to three times a week? Daycare on each campus? Surely, teachers do not want to expose their kids more, nor can it be expected they babysit their own kids while teaching their students simultaneously. How do we help our educators who are parents? Work from home. There needs to be, given some of the aforementioned reasons above, a way for teachers to be able to instruct from home as an option and not lose pay, sick leave and/or instructional time. Zero tolerance, no mask, no school until the staff member or student gets one. Newsom says we have hundreds of millions of masks to provide, so we need to provide them should someone not have or forget to bring. Refusal to wear one is refusal, is refusal to be allowed on campus. Vaccine, if, when, when becomes available, mandated in order to return to campus. Staff students must show proof of having received said vaccine. Anti-vaxxer, it's their right, just as it's their right to homeschool or choose another profession. Longer passing periods. If teachers are to be the ones sanitizing desks, or even if students assist, we need to allow time for this between periods. Teachers already don't get to use restroom when they need to, and if the five minutes probably longer between classes is spent sanitizing, they will not have proper breaks for restroom water excess, et cetera. Instructional expectations. We want to be back at school with our kids, but this may not be possible for every staff member given different home situations. Everyone has hesitation, staff, parents, students. The world over students have been returning to school with many protocols in place. Hybrid seems to be a popular idea. Half the kids go to school Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday is a deep cleaning, custodial prep, grade time. The second half of students goes Thursday, Friday, but what does this mean for teachers? We are the constants on campus. It does not matter if we have five kids in class or fifty. I teach the same and put the same prep into the days lessons for the three very different subjects I teach. But if I am to teach possibly full-time in person four days out of the week and then must provide supplemental lessons online for when students are not on campus, how is now too, this is now two full-time jobs. We need to know that the online expectations are for a hybrid model and how much work instruction is expected to be given over two different platforms, online and in person. Wednesdays in the aforementioned hybrid would need to be fully dedicated to prep grade for all teachers and at the minimum to make this work. We want this to, we want this online teaching. I'm sorry, we want this to work with a minimal teacher burnout of the expectations of being fully in person and online. This doesn't exist at the university level since online teaching began a couple of decades ago and definitely shouldn't at the K-12 level. We just need proper time to plan and grade if we are instructing kids in person and online. Again, we all want to be with students and in person. That's why we chose to teach in person. Many of us will take whatever in-person days we can, but the online component needs to be flexible at the least with what we are asking to do. I'm sorry, my screen flipped and I can't see. Sorry.
Moving forward, the next public comment is from Jill Reed. Members of the board, I'm a first-grade teacher at Montevista Elementary School. I've been hesitant to write a letter because I'm not sure what to say. What can I say that hasn't already been said? What can I say that isn't already so obvious that to ignore it would be considered criminally negligent? I've read some of the letters written by my colleagues and come to a realization. My letter alone will probably not help you make your decision, but I hope that all of our letters as a whole will have an impact. I love being in the classroom and interacting with students. I love the special relationships that we create by sharing the journey of learning together and growing together. I soak up the smiles and excitement with each new day because of a concept that is learned, a friend that is made, a classroom community that's created, and nourished by our experiences. I'm sharing this with you first because it's a way, if there's a way for us to go back to the classroom, knowing we are all safe and our lives are top priorities, staff and students, this would be my first choice. I cannot speak for everyone, but I'm pretty sure we'd all choose this scenario. Unfortunately, the above scenario just won't work. It will make my heart ache to think of starting the school year, meeting my students through Google Classroom, but what makes my heart ache even more is the thought that I might have to comfort these students and help guide them through the grief of losing a friend or a teacher because of COVID nineteen. I might also have to guide them through the daily fear for their own lives because they are being exposed to a deadly virus. I might also have to answer the question, if it's unsafe for us to be around each other, why are we here? How would I answer that question? How would you answer it? Is it possible for us to successfully teach our youth and not physically be in the classroom with them? We all answered that question at the end of the last school year. It will not be perfect, but we will be safe. If it is not possible to experience meaningful, it is not possible to experience meaningful learning when you're placed in an environment that puts your life at risk. Please protect all of us and refuse to open schools until there have been fourteen days of no new cases in Sonoma County.
Next comment is from Kay Hawkins. Dear Dr. Perez and members of the board, as a teacher in the Kattati-Rona Park Unified School District for the past thirty-three years, I have certainly seen the results of planning and lack of planning in our schools. A few months ago, we were given two days before we dove headfirst into distance learning. The results were varied. Some deemed it a success, while others called it a total wash. My closest colleagues and I took it as a personal and professional challenge to keep our curriculum lively, lively and engaging, and other than the means of delivery, not changing much of our expectations and requirements for student success. In my final Google Meet of the year during the last week of school, I told my students that they should be proud of the work that they had produced and that those who had the same work ethic they would have ahead of school had not missed concepts or essential standards. Distance learning was incredibly stressful and time-consuming, but for the most part, it was a success for the majority of my students. In preparing for all the various unknowns that barrage us currently, my largest request is twofold. First of all, plan and make those plans well-considered. I'm encouraged that the district has a task force of teachers and administrators. I'm encouraged that you have called for extra board meetings to consider the future. I'm encouraged that you have sent out surveys. The plan is in process, but the time is short. My second request is to make expectations clear. One of the reasons that students, parents and teachers experience frustration with distance learning was that our expectations put out by our schools were all over the place for issues like attendance, credit, no credit, and grading, assignment completion and time management. Everyone needs clearly defined expectations with accountability attached. We do this faithfully when we are at our school sites. Why can this not be included with distance learning? With planning and expectations in place, distance learning can work. Your teachers will continue to rise to the occasion with whatever model is decided on, but please don't rule out continuing distance learning until it's absolutely safe and feasible to return to our sites. The time, energy and cost to have in-person learning is great at this point. I ask that you continue to consider the safety of your faculty, your faculties and staffs before bringing us back to the campuses. With whatever plan and timeline you decide on, please assure everyone there that there are clear expectations, along with appropriate support in place. Thank you for listening.
The next comment is from Jim Gregorretti. I would first like to welcome Dr. Perez, our new superintendent for the Kattati-Rona Park Unified School District. I realize that taking over our district now during the pandemic poses additional and unforeseen challenges as you lead our school district into the future. I have the utmost confidence that you, Dr. Wattenpaw, and our CRP USD school board members will provide strong leadership through the crisis we now face. I would also like to thank board members Non, Gillies, Chamina, Wiltermood and Board President Brown for the opportunity to have my concerns be heard in this forum. These are some of the main consequences, questions that I have regarding reopening schools in August. Is the district going to be testing staff and students for COVID nineteen on a regular basis? If so, what would the frequency be? Daily, weekly, biweekly? Will the district be offering its workers hazard pay because of the increased risk of contracting COVID nineteen? After all, we're all the, we are, are the very definition of essential workers. Will the district be responsible for providing staff and students PPE? How often? Daily, weekly? Why are students twelve years old and under not required to wear a mask? What about gloves? If students are returning to school for a hybrid model, everyone, staff and student should, at a minimum, be wired, required to wear a mask. As a sixth-grade teacher who is at higher risk for COVID, this is a major issue for me returning back to the classroom. Is the district going to make teachers check student temperature prior to entering classroom? This would be out of the scope of our normal duties. What will the protocol be for a student that displays signs of possible COVID nineteen infection? If we're going to a hybrid model, who's going to disinfect the room after students have left and the next group enter? There is normally only one custodian on campus during the day. Will there be any additional custodians hired for this? Will our current budget allow for this? Who is going to be enforcing social distancing before school, break, lunch, after school? If, is the district expecting teachers to monitor social distancing during these times? Once again, that falls outside normal teaching duties. Should teachers who are considered high-risk for COVID nineteen be able to teach remotely? According to Steve Harrington from SCO, students are not supposed to be sharing items such as pencils, pens, colored pencils, crayons, et cetera. Who will be ensuring that each student has their own items? If students need to be quarantined at school until their parents come and get them, who will be responsible to supervise them? And where would the location be as a safety precaution to all other students and staff? Can the district ensure that all students are one-to-one with technology? Because we might be closing schools again because of the second wave of COVID that is expected in October and November. We are currently seeing a spike in cases here in Sonoma County. According to experts, it's not a matter of if we will see a spike in the fall, it's a matter of when. Finally, if we do not go with a hybrid model and we go full distance learning mode for the start of the school year, how can we effectively hold students accountable for their work product? This was a major concern for many teachers during the distance learning this last trimester. I would once again like to thank Superintendent Perez, Superintendent Wattenpaw and the CRP USD Board for the opportunity to hear my concerns.
The next comment is from Susan Holtenzel. As a teacher in the district, I'm very well aware of the importance of students receiving firsthand education within the classroom and within the presence of a normal committed and caring teacher. I cannot, however, imagine that we are all ready to go back to what one calls normal or even hybrid this fall. COVID nineteen is a horrific disease with long-term effects and a plethora of unknowns. However, the plan may be written. If students and teachers come back to school, teachers will be highly exposed if they come into contact with a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty students per week or month. We have been sheltering in place to avoid contact with people we have no control over. People who may be sick or carriers of the virus. Once rules were slackened, the surge as predicted occurred. Teachers will be overexposed. Teachers will get sick. Teachers will take the virus home to their loved ones who may be elderly and/or have pre-existing conditions that put them at very high risk of death. Teachers will die. We need to continue working at a distance learning to keep us safe. We need to ensure that all students have the support they need at home to be successful. We cannot take the risk of losing those we love.
Comment from Sarah Land. My name is Sarah Land, and I'm writing today as both a teacher here at CRP USD as well as a mother of a child in our school district. These weeks spent at home taking care of my son have made me realize the significant emotional ramifications of staying away from family, friends and public places. My three-year-old asked me to go to the park, and I saw the confusion on his face when I told him that we couldn't go swing on the swings or play on the slides. I do not feel comfortable going back into my classroom in August. I understand that there's a lot of using many safety measures, both in the school as well as outside. However, there is still an increased probability of my contracting the disease. If I were to come home with COVID nineteen, I'm putting both my son and husband at risk. I strongly urge the members to vote for starting the twenty twenty-one school year with long-distance learning. For the community members worried about their children continuing with isolating home, trust me when I say that I'm working with my school to develop an engaging and safe digital learning environment for your children. Thank you for your time.
The next comment is from Tracy Ewens. My name is Tracy Ewens. I'm a parent of a fourth grader and sixth grader in our district. I live in Rona Park and teach second grade at Evergreen. Being a teacher in CRP USD for twenty-two years, I'm very aware that there are many factors that go into school opening in August, even without COVID nineteen. With the rate of infection of COVID nineteen is rising in Sonoma County, I strongly believe going back to a physical classroom full-time or hybrid in August would not be the best for the health of our community. I'm part of the district's task force that met this morning and looked at different hybrid models from other districts in our area. Give or take a few differences from the models, they were about the same. Me in a classroom for an extended period of time with twelve or more second graders wearing masks and six feet apart, while also planning for and teaching distance learning. Anyone that has taught knows that children under stress do not learn well. This is seen every day in classrooms for children that have many ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, not being able to learn when they are in the classroom. Children in a classroom with masks on and social distancing will heighten their anxiety, which will make learning harder, while at the same time will allow for spreading germs. I just keep thinking, would risking the spread of COVID nineteen be worth it for substandard learning conditions? I understand that parents need daycare, but I'm not a daycare provider. I'm a teacher. Maybe we as a district need to think of outside the box. A possible idea is to have staff that aren't teaching core subjects and our teachers that want to work in person run daycare in small groups, following daycare guidelines that would include schoolwork time and distance learning time with Wi-Fi on campus. This could possibly be coordinated with local daycares. With planning, this model could allow the students to have special needs to have extra, have access to extra support from staff. Another possible idea is for some days of the week, teachers adjust their teaching schedules to allow for families that need late afternoon, evening instruction. I believe there are many options that haven't been explored yet, and our district could be the ones to come up with the ideas. As a professional thrown into a new job of distance teaching in March, I did a good job for being self-taught and not having any training for the job. I connected with the majority of my families. I saw students make academic growth. And yes, there was one student, as hard as I tried, who never showed up. I feel that now I have a strong understanding of what distance learning looks like. I can greatly improve on it. As a parent, I was amazed at the dedication my personal children's teachers put into distance learning and that my children's education continued. If we begin planning now for distance learning in August, we would, we could come up with much better than we did in the spring. Improving distance learning will be very difficult if we as teachers are also learning to teach a hybrid model. I believe we should start with distance learning and not a hybrid model in August. Thank you for your time.
The next letter is from Jen Bodlavich. Hello, President Trustee Brown, members of the board and Superintendent Perez. My name is Jen Bodlavich, and I've taught elementary school in this district for seventeen years. I'm writing tonight to address the board in regards to reopening schools in the fall. I'm trying to assess the situation from a variety of angles and ramifications. I will also state that I was not involved in the district task force team, so maybe these questions have been discussed. In reopening schools this fall, I originally thought a hybrid would be doable, but now for much consideration, the ever-changing COVID concerns, I suggest we start with distance learning for at least the first semester trimester. My basis for this suggests stems from a series of questions. What is the plan if a student in CRP USD tests positive for COVID? How are all students in the classroom tested? Is the whole school tested? Would the school temporarily close? Would that situation of testing affect the mental state of students, parents, staff? Would they feel safe in their classroom? Feeling safe is a foundational instinct when it comes to being ready to learn. If that school needs to close, then teachers and students are then scrambling to prepare and readjust back to distance learning. The time and energies teachers and staff spend at the start of school to prepare for the hybrid model is lost. Now to pose a different topic question. How can we efficient, effectively, excuse me, efficiently use teacher collaboration time at the start of the school year? Aside from the workdays, all educators have two professional development days before the school year starts. Teachers have been exposed to the distance learning style, so this is important time that could be used to build upon skills we started last spring. Teachers have been exposed to the distance learning style, so this is an important time that could be used to build upon skills we started last spring. Since there is a variety of experience and knowledge levels with our educators, this development time could be used to collaborate and focus solely on distance learning platforms. In conclusion, I realize that distance learning and hybrid models are not ideal. I also recognize that both models have a range of hardships on families. However, if a student or staff member contracts COVID and the district plan is to use distance learning model, then let's use our time and resources from the start to mentally and physically prepare for this type of teaching and learning. I appreciate you considering these questions, and thank you for your time.
The next comment is from Mandy Hilliard. Hello, Dr. Perez and trustees. My name is Mandy Hilliard, and I have been teaching in Catania Riner Park for 16 years. I currently teach kindergarten at Evergreen Elementary. Not only am I a teacher in the district, but I'm also a parent. My son is entering second grade at Evergreen next year, and my daughter is entering TK. If our district decides to begin with distance learning in the fall, I will not be sending my kids. I also do not feel comfortable returning myself. Since we began to shelter in place last March, my family has strictly followed the guidelines of our county health officer. We have not gone to a restaurant, we have not taken the kids to a store, we have not gathered with other families. They haven't hugged their grandparents. It's been very hard. Distance learning was hard for our family. This whole situation has been hard. My husband lost his job due to the pandemic, and now my family must survive on just my teacher's salary. I want to return to school, and I want my kids to get some normalcy back. However, I do not feel it is safe to return to class in any physical way. To ask students and teachers to return to campus, even in a hybrid model, is asking us to take unnecessary risks with our health. The environment needed to keep us safe is not an environment conducive to learning. As we have no former teachers on our board, I want to paint a picture of what the first day of kindergarten looks like. Kids usually trickle in, find their cubbies, and find a table of toys to play with. Their parents take cute pictures. There are usually a few criers that do not want to separate from mom and dad. I usually swoop in with a big hug and a distraction of some fun toys and a promise of a fun day full of games, songs, playing, and art. I might have a runner, a kid that flees the room in search of their parent. We usually have to run after these students and give comfort. Our day is structured to include lots of breaks, free choice, academics, stretch breaks, songs, etc. I end the day with parents all crowded outside the door eager to hear how the first day of school was. I give each student a high five as they leave or in the first day of school crown. I try to imagine what the first day will look like in person in the middle of a pandemic. They will be greeted by a teacher wearing a mask, a face shield, and in some cases, full PPE. They won't see my face or know what I look like. There will be no toys, no hugs, no physical comfort for criers, runners, hurt feelings, or injuries. There will be no space in the classroom for a carpet area with physically-distanced tables, so we have to stay in seats all day. Learning procedures for bathroom and hand washing will be a priority along with mask etiquette. How will the cleaning of the bathroom take place? Will it be cleaned after each use? How is that even possible? Five-year-olds are messy. How do we handle bathroom accidents? What about masks? If a child doesn't wear a mask correctly or refuses to keep it on, how do we handle that? How much instructional time will be used on hand washing, mask correcting, and hygiene? How will we address the students with behavior challenges and the needs of our students with ADHD and sensory issues? Beyond the basic logistical questions I have, there is also a matter of how we can ensure safety in a hybrid model. We can try to control every aspect of a student's time at school, but we cannot control what the child does when they are not at school. Even if I, as a parent, do all the right things to protect my child, I can't ensure other families are doing the same. Maybe they're getting together with other families, maybe they aren't wearing masks when around other people. We also have to consider that a great number of students will be attending daycares after school and on their off days. They are now being exposed to an entirely new cohort of children and their germs only to bring them back to the secluded group at school and put everyone at risk. I understand the desire and absolute need for the students to return to class, but school is more than just free childcare. Our job is to educate our students and prepare them for next year. I can be a great in-person teacher and a great distance learning teacher, but I can't be great at both at the same time, especially not while also fearing for my health and the health of my kids, my family, and my students. The fear and anxiety that will come with returning to school are going to be significant and would need to be addressed, further taking away from instructional time. We have additional counselors and psychologists to help address the mental health issues, the mental health aspect of this pandemic. The thought of returning to campus while our numbers in Sonoma County continue to increase gives me a lot of anxiety. We are in a worse spot now than we were when spring closed, when we closed. I do not feel it is appropriate to even consider in-person learning until we have had no new cases for 14 days. I urge the Board to make the decision to resume distance learning and reconvene to make a new plan when it is safer to do so. In the meantime, we can focus on how we will better serve our students, our teachers, and our families. We can focus on providing better supports for our most at-risk students. If we open in person too soon, there will be six students and staff and possibly desks. That is a lot to ask of us both mentally and physically. Please keep our safety as your first priority when making this potentially life-altering decision. Thank you.
Julie, I'll do the next two. The next comment is from Chris Brandenburg. I would urge all caution in opening schools for onsite learning if Sonoma County has experienced a second shutdown phase. If we are closing businesses due to a dangerous upswing in COVID-19 cases and hospitalization mortality rates, why would we open schools for in-person attendance? Even a hybrid model puts students, staff, and all their families at risk and may seriously strain community health resources. Let's make certain public education is not viewed as primarily public childcare. The next comment is from Aaron, did we, Aaron Hafsted? No, no, excuse me. Next one's from Aaron Hafsted. To the CRP USD School Board, my name is Aaron Hafsted. I teach transitional kindergarten to second grade, special day class for moderately to severely disabled students in our district. I have significant concerns about the safety of returning to do in-person learning this fall. I've shared all of these concerns with the Special Agent Administrator and to the task force, but I'd like to share them with you as well. I see a lot of hard work, creative thinking, and in-depth, realistic planning going on at the district level, and that is the only reason I'm willing to consider participating in something other than 100% distance learning. However, I also have significant reservations with in-person learning via the hybrid model. I'm torn. The only thing I do know is we cannot go back to business as usual. I do not envy the near impossible choices you have to make, but I want to share some concerns that are unique to special education so that you can make decisions with as much information as possible. To start, students with special needs are at higher risk. People with Down Syndrome of all ages are more likely to die from heart and lung issues than any other cause. They have specific physiological differences that cause them to be more impacted by respiratory illnesses. Our students who have seizures are more likely to have seizures when ill. Many of our students have weakened immune systems. My students generally become ill more easily, are more severely impacted, and take significantly longer to recover than their typically developing peers. We do not have the staffing to return to full SDC classes as before, even though we have much smaller classes than general ed to begin with. To maintain social distancing between students, many of our students would require an adult by their side, not socially distanced, for most of the day. For some of our students, staying in a designated area or respecting personal space are IEP goals we work on all year. If we must go back, the hybrid model is the only way we will have enough staff to keep students safely distanced. Students with special needs have unique challenges. Wearing things like glasses or even clothing is a daily challenge for some students with special needs. For some, wearing these items is even an annual IEP goal. Think about what that means for masks. My students have behavioral challenges. This year, students spat at me well over 100 times. I was a human Kleenex at times. New behaviors will develop. Getting in peer spaces will become an attention-seeking or work-escaping game. During distance, I had a student pretend to cough all the screen during Google meets. The student has already learned coughing, and others will gain them attention. Under normal circumstances, I feel we are equipped to handle these behaviors. We are able to reduce and eventually eliminate these behaviors, but it takes a lot of time. We no longer have that time. We need an unusually low staff-to-student ratio to make in-person learning even relatively safe for students and to maintain social distancing between students. The most important thing I need you to understand regarding staff safety is that adults cannot care for our special populations while social distancing. My staff and I are responsible for helping students use the bathroom and change diapers. We provide dressing assistance and feeding assistance. We provide physical prompting, hand-over-hand support, and proximal support. At times, we provide hands-on behavioral support and interventions. Students need sensory-regulating supports like joint compressions daily. Some students require wheelchair transfers, lifting, and mobility support. None of these duties can be performed from six feet away or without physical contact. While I'm appreciative of the district's planning and purchasing face shields, smocks, and cloth masks, cloth masks are not enough in special day classes. My mask protects you, your mask protects me, does not work for students who would need a year or more just to learn to wear a mask. We need N95s for special day class staff as well as new protocols and plans for behaviors if we're to keep students and staff safe during in-person learning. Even with N95s, I acknowledge we would still be risking health and safety with in-person learning, but it would be more reasonable, tenable risk. I miss my students, my staff, and my classroom. I want to be back at work. As much as I love my family, I'd love to interact with other people for a change, but I'm torn between what is the mostly and academic best for my students and what is safest for everyone I live with and help care for, my parents, who are in high-risk category. I plan to keep my own child home on distance learning program as school resumes. I understand that not everyone has the luxury of that choice, and my heart hurts for those families. Whichever option we choose, safety must be our first priority in all planning. It must be planned for in reality, not just on paper and square feet, desk arrangements, and the rules are criteria that we know won't have 100% compliance for a myriad of reasons. Thank you for your thoughtful planning and consideration in an impossibly difficult situation.
Mike, I'll read the next few. Sandra Noy. If we have in-person classes, what happens when a teacher tests positive for COVID? They have to quarantine for 14 days. Is that using their sick time? Is it unpaid? Will they be required to teach remotely while in quarantine? How will substitutes be handled for distance learning? Will the district be able to provide technology to subs? Or will sons be required to use their personal computers to sub for distance learning? How will you manage subs for in-person teaching to limit increased exposure to students and staff? The next comment is from Marvin. I know there's a lot of concerned parents out there. We all want to know what you are waiting to announce, what's going to happen for the next school year that starts next month. A lot of parents have to plan out what to do. I believe it's, I'm sorry, but stupid that you are taking too long to decide if students are returning to school or schooling from home. We all know this COVID-19. It's not getting any better in our country. Thank you for your time. In our county, excuse me. The next comment is from Mahah Gregoriti. Is the district contracting out union teaching jobs to edge annuity for distance learning? If so, that's a violation of our contract. All teaching in the district should be provided by RIPSCE and members. Has the district been able to map out each room on our campus to determine the maximum student capacity while ensuring the six-foot guidance, distance guideline? Will the maximum student occupancy be posted on each classroom?
Julie, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to finish? Here, I'll read the last one. This, I believe, is the last one from April Garcia. I simply want to address my concerns for the structure of distance learning. Should we go that route in fall? I personally feel a hybrid model is the way we should go, but that's another long topic. My concern is that the bulk to teaching will be, my concern is that the bulk to teaching will be falling on parents, many who are working parents. If we must do any amount of distance learning in the upcoming school year, it must mirror a classroom schedule. I know my experiences and have talked with many parents. I personally had a great teacher for my child, and she is an independent learner. I also know many who had a terrible experience. While I feel the teachers did the best they could in such a short amount of prep time, I feel that there was little instruction time, again, based on the feedback I've gotten from other parents, short Zoom meetings with small instruction, and then leaving parents to figure out the rest is unacceptable. When you add in the fact that the district gets funds for our students' attendance, the lack of teaching that occurred in spring cannot be repeated. I know several who are looking into homeschooling programs if there's a repeat of spring's experiences. I would hate for the district to lose students. Our district's teachers and staff are amazing. I think the Board owes it to them and our students to make a decision now so that everyone can prepare to give our district the best possible experience for the 2020, 2021 school year. I believe that is the final comment.
Okay. I want to thank everyone that submitted those comments. They are very helpful for us, and they're all super comments. I want to thank Mike and Myra and Julie for your workout there. That was a bunch, but excellent job. So why don't we take a few-minute break for everybody? And we'll come back in, let's say, five minutes. Does that sound good? Okay, and then at that time, we will go into the six Board Services update planning for the 2021 year reopening of schools as a discussion. We do not have an agendized item to make a final decision tonight, but the staff is going to give us an update on planning and then other information, and then we can go forward from there. Okay? So we'll take a quick five-minute break, and we'll be back to you in five minutes. Thanks. I'm back. Is everybody else back or we still breaking?
I'm here.
I'm back.
I'm here.
Looks like Jennifer is either muted or not back. Can't get my bottle of Gatorade open. Well, I'll use scissors. No. Oh, there we go. Almost had to call the grandkids to do it. Log on to the computer and make the TV work. Jennifer, you back? I guess not.
I'm here.
Okay, good. Are we ready to reconvene? I assume so. We will reconvene to open session after the break. And now I'm turning it over to staff for update and planning on reopening of the schools.
Yes, we have a presentation for you tonight. That will be projecting. Anyway, please, please understand that this is a summary of what we know now and you know that the information is changing frequently. And even one of the slides that's in this presentation, we got it. We got new information late this afternoon. That's a little bit different. So next slide. At this time, we really want to talk about the safety guidelines, which you're probably aware of re-entry stages. Talk about the equipment that that has been ordered and is beginning to arrive. Provide you with an update on the task force, that task force meetings that we've been having. Julie will be providing that for you and then talk a little bit about next steps and then a potential communication plan and our thoughts and I'd love to hear from you of any suggestions that you may have. Next slide. So really, really the documents, there's many guiding documents. We really have tailored and looked at this in terms of stronger together, which is the CD document as well as the roadmap to safety opening, which is Sonoma County document. And if the guiding principles behind these documents really are to protect students, staff and community health. To foster student learning in progress. To maintain a positive learning environment, to foster student emotional health. And to care for our most vulnerable population. So that's what you're going to hear are the themes throughout these documents. Next slide. So as you know, these are, these are the guidelines that we have to operate under. Stay home when appropriate, when appropriate. So if a child or an adult has a fever or they come in contact with someone with COVID nineteen, it's recommended that they stay home. We definitely have to practice hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette in terms of hand washing, if coughing and sneezing into a tissue. We, what's interesting is this very debated face covering. At one point, we said everyone, children to ages two and above should have face covering. The state is still ruling, talking about that. So that information changes frequently. But we know most certainly that that adults need to be wear face coverings. Because that's the safest way to proceed. We have to provide adequate support of the hygiene, which means sanitizer, wipes, face masks, face shields. So you'll hear a little bit about that later. We have to provide the proper signage and messaging about that social distancing. In terms of classroom setup. You know, this, this is not the way we used to operate, but really at this point in terms of the health, the health protocols, it's six feet apart. Desk facing forward and consider using outdoor space whenever possible. So we know that's not ideal. I was a former teacher. That's not the way we taught. You know, and what we've taught for many years, but this is currently what what's expected in terms of keeping folks safe. In terms of wellness protocol checks. You know, taking temperatures, asking, you know, watching if kids have symptoms. And we do realize that some will be asymptomatic. And in terms of the physical, physical barriers and guides, again. You know, signs on the floor to signal that six feet distancing, the physical barriers, sneeze guards, which would be placed in the offices to prevent office staff and also for teachers. So that's a little bit about that information. The next slide, please. So one of the things that's been cleared and clear in the documents is that that when gatherings could be virtual whenever possible in terms of meetings. We really want to limit the essential, non-essential visitors, volunteers and activities. So for for the time being, we wouldn't want, we wouldn't be going on field trips, our volunteers, that wouldn't be happening, our school outside groups coming in. We'd have to limit those external groups to keep folks, students and staff safe. Also, we know about that static group as much as possible, keeping that cohort group isolated as much as possible. Limit that limit of mixing groups, staggered schedules. Could we have different groups dropping off? The other thing that's been identified in these documents at high-risk electives is something that we need to consider. So music band choir and theater are considered high-risk electives. And then structured extracurricular activities and sports. So we know that we have to be very careful and consider that six-foot distancing, which can be difficult during the extracurricular activities and sports. Next slide. Now, this is the, this is the slide that we, you know, when I began listening to meetings and participating in school meetings. A couple of months before I started, it was, we were, the messaging was that stage two was a hundred percent distance learning. Stage three was a hybrid model and compliance following health guidelines. And then stage four is return to work, considering also health guidelines that would, that we provided by our health officials. And what's, what's interesting and we're currently in, you know, I've been asking, where are we? And we are in stage three in Sonoma currently. That could change, as you, as you well know, with increased cases. And today I learned that these stages really do not refer to schools. So originally this was presented as this is what we're looking at to compare to schools. Now, now today, just this afternoon, it was said these stages do not refer to schools because schools are essential. Next slide, please. So in turn, just a little review about the, the PPE equipment that's being provided by the state. We're receiving N ninety-five school medical for, for school medical staff. Cloth masks and disposal masks for students, teachers and staff. Face shields for staff and IAs and thermometers. What the, what the state has determined and decided is that they would provide us with approximately sixty days. The masks would be, would be provided in elementary and secondary sizes. So this includes students. And kind of the determining factor was two masks for, two masks per child. And four per teacher. So that is what the state's providing. Okay, so let's move on to what we've provide. We're looking at the district. So we have our business department, our MO department buying extra support. So extra. And this is exactly what Josh reported last time, but I wanted to capture this in a slide. The electrostatic sprayer for each site, hand sanitizers, wipes and rags for each classroom, sneeze guards for offices. Signs to remind folks about social distancing. The other things that are on order are touchless dispensers, trash cans with foot pedals, gloves, gowns and mobile privacy shelters, which we used to isolate should someone have symptoms and be ill, become ill while at school. Next slide. So we've had all this information or receiving information and then comes along Senate Bill ninety-eight. And really what we heard today, which is the first time I heard that, which is good information, is this, this is really a directive to open schools. Okay, and when we look at the, the district will be held harmless in terms of ADA. And the way we will be funded would be, will be based on nineteen twenty enrollment numbers. This Senate bill eliminates the ability to implement summer certificated layoffs. As well as it prohibits implementation of classified employees with the classification of nutrition, transportation or custodial services. Prevents us from, from laying off those, that's, that's that personnel. In terms of distance learning, this is interesting. I am still learning about it, but it's saying that is, that basically what the law says is it's permitted if there is an order from a public health official. So basically the, the direction we're receiving or the guidance we're receiving is we need to go hybrid. So there, but, but it's very confusing and, and it's unclear in terms of it's ambiguous. So really one of, what the recommendation has been is if we're implementing, if we go with distance learning, we really need to seek legal counsel because we really don't want to jeopardize our, our funding. So that's where I need to receive more clarity. In terms of instructional days, we're expected to have a hundred and eighty days of instruction. And then you could see that the, that the instructional minutes have been modified somewhat. Anyway, so that, that's the legislative, the directive in terms of Senate Bill nineteen. Ninety-eight, I'm sorry. Next, next slide. Julie, would you like to talk a little bit about what conversations we've been having? We've had two meetings and I've been able to participate or listen in on both. We've done some, some preliminary work.
Absolutely, and I want to thank all the staff members who have volunteered their time during the summer to come and sit on this task force. And some of the things that we're trying to tackle, kind of to try to determine our roles and responsibilities as staff for both distance and hybrid learning. What, what is it going to look like? How are we going to address all the concerns that you've heard through all the comments tonight? Today we took a look at, as was mentioned, we looked at some of our neighboring districts and are doing in terms of scheduling and how they're going to bring students back into the classroom and kind of with their distance learning and hybrid models. We're, we're talking about the logistical plans to ensure student and staff's safety. Again, we're talking about the temperature checks, how this will all happen and how are we going to best keep students safe. We are going to be designing supports for special populations. Again, how are we going to make sure that our English learners, our students with special needs, foster youth and homeless students get additional supports through distance learning and our hybrid model? But to make sure that there's no, no more learning loss. And we really, one of the things that we're going to do too is kind of really identify kind of the teacher expectations. You kind of heard that through some of the comments as well as what, what is expected of us and then how are we going to kind of maintain consistency and coherence throughout the district? We will be establishing some of the professional development needs to get us up and running here. Looking again at using Google, how are we going to utilize our technology? How are we going to address our essential standards and really ensure that we are offering a robust curriculum? In addition, we're also looking, one of the big components of Senate Bill ninety-eight is really kind of trying to address the mental health supports and social emotional curricular needs of our students. And I am going to say staff, as again, as you have heard through the comments tonight. There is great concern and, and again, we made an incredible shift. Our teachers are amazing. But it's definitely taken a toll and we want to address that as well. And again, working with our amazing food services department, how are we going to specify nutritional protocols? What will it look like for lunch? Pickup, things to that extent. So really utilizing our amazing food service director, Suzie King, to help us with the moving forward with the nutritional protocols.
Okay, in terms of communications, you know, this is, this is really critical at a time like this. So in terms of you know, my thoughts were that we need to provide continuous communication and, and and I, I think that it has to vary in forms. You know, we, we do want to put it on the website through our social media, but I also think it's critical. You know, that families may not be aware, may not get the information that that's been my experience. So short video messages is something that, that I think we need to consider to provide updates to our community and most certainly it has to be provided bilingualy. The other thing that I, that I think is, that has been helpful, that I think would be helpful is FAQs. So that we can provide information in the form of question. We've received a lot of questions today through our comments. I think that could guide our frequently asked questions. So that if we have a rather, you know, we have a, you know, some key points that we communicate. But then in the FAQs, that can be a bit, a little bit lengthier and people can type in, you know, what do we, you know, what do they want to know about maybe the PP equipment and they can go there so for our community. Also that, you know, definitely the schools will be providing a communication terms of schedule updates and pertinent information regarding regarding school opening and schedules that, that, you know, they are the primary contact would definitely do the communication through the district and also updating our website to make sure that we provide clear communication. So those are ideas on, on, on communication to make, make sure that they were clear. And in terms of next steps, we, we had a, a good meeting as that we, that we started this week with Ripsey and we want to continue to work with our labor groups to discuss and develop MOUs and, and really we're not, we, you know, there, there hasn't been a decision to go hybrid. That's, that's that's just kind of in the planning stages and we want to, I want to be proactive. So whatever we decide, whatever the, the board decides, that we have a plan in place. There's nothing more unsettling that to go forward with whatever we decide, whatever the governing board decides without having a plan for folks to be able to roll out a clear staff. And I want to present a plan that has the voices of many of our community, of our parents, of our staff. So we've also talked about possibly beginning this subcommittee discussions about student schedules, what makes sense. You know, having a plan for each school doesn't make sense. We want a structure for our schools that makes sense. And if elementary could all have a similar structure, similar logistics, it makes sense to do that and provide some continuity for our children. And also we have to communicate this in our learning and continuity plan. So we have a different LCAP this year. It is not the accountability plan, but this is going to be, how are we going to do, provide instruction for our students? And we will have to answer, you know, provide different information. Julie, do you have some ideas in terms of the components of the, of the, the different LCAP for this year?
Yes, yes. So some of the things that we are going to have to address will be the new roles and responsibilities of our staff. How we're implementing professional development to support distance and hybrid learning. How we are going to ensure a continuity of instruction. And again, and I think they, I believe they do want us to address emergency days as well. How we are going to measure student progress, how we are ensuring engagement and outreach. We need to develop a tiered response to ensure that all kids are learning. We're going to have to create support systems for students with specific, unique needs. And those groups were mentioned earlier, English learners, our foster youth, our homeless students and pupils with special education needs. And really, how are we going to address learning loss? So again, what will we do to catch up our students who may have fallen behind during distance learning? So those will be some of the main areas that we will have to address for our plan that will be due September thirtieth. So this is going to be a quick timeline to get all of this ready and organized. And we will, the template will come out, I believe, August first, but they've given us kind of the parameters of what we're supposed to work on and so we will be doing that.
Okay, and, and the template will be out soon. Anyway, that, that concludes the presentation. We wanted to provide you with this overview, some of it that you already aware of. And then some new information that we've received. So really at this point, you know, I'd like to entertain any questions from the board.
I, I've, I listened to Steve Harrington's presentation today. And it was very different. And he actually was very different within his first forty-five minutes. He was basically sounded like initially his be very, very, very careful how you open schools to we're not, there's ambiguity about the distance learning piece because then at one point he sounded like he was really advocating for the distance learning to be very careful. So it was kind of all over the place, but he said some things I think that were really important. It's supposed to get mailed out because I know. It's supposed to get mailed out because I know, he mailed out. I know a lot of people weren't able to log on and listen to what he had to say. But I have to say that Cindy Savage Hopkins' comment about, I mean, I haven't been shy for the last six, eight weeks about, I, I don't understand why we're even entertaining having students on campus at all in any form. Maybe it's something we look at in December, but if there, you know, if, if the state legislatures coming down saying, you have, you can't have a distance only model. But here we are in Sonoma County with cases going up, hospital beds getting full, ITU's getting full. What is the state even talking about opening schools? I just don't understand it. It, it just doesn't make any sense. We, if people are going to get sick, you can't keep kids. Even if you do a hybrid model and you've got kids coming Monday and Tuesday, they're going to a daycare with a totally different group of cohorts. They're coming back to class the next week, exposing everybody to all the people exponentially they've been around. I mean, I get, we all want kids to be in school. I get that. It's the best place for them to be, to learn. I feel for parents who are trying to figure out what they're going to do about working and not having their kids at school. But I think our first priority is to keep everybody safe, healthy. That's students, faculty, and the extended families when they go home. We don't, we know that there are a lot of people that aren't following any kind of wearing masks. I mean, if you drive by over at Tech Middle School, you've got thirty to forty kids that rode their bike over there in their soccer uniforms today. And they're all playing out on the field, running into each other. No one's wearing masks. The adult, excuse me, adults aren't wearing masks. So i- if we can't even control who's coming onto our campus, what are we going to do about parents who are not requiring their kids to social distance? I, I think we're asking for big trouble in five weeks to reopen schools with a, a component that is on campus. So I just had another few things to say. The distance learning, one of the requirements I thought was interesting, it, it requires daily contact with the credential teacher. There can't be a teacher's giving lessons on a Monday and not checking in again till Friday. The distance learning component requires daily contact. I thought that was interesting. And that the schools are not subject to the stages as the rest of the economy is. We don't fit into three or four. Even if we go under the watch and concern list, which Dr. Mays last night said, she fully expects us to be there by Friday. Which means closing down of bars again, which I don't know how bars got on the mandatory list anyway, other than tax revenue for the state. So all of those things getting rolled back by Friday puts us on the list for a minimum of three weeks. With having to have then fourteen days of no new cases, but the state saying schools aren't part of that list. I don't understand. If, if you can have fifty-six hundred plus students, I, I don't even get what they're trying to do because it just doesn't make any sense. That we would open up schools in the middle of a pandemic of increasing cases. And it's not just people testing positive. This isn't about testing. This is about the hospitalizations going up and sadly, the deaths take two, well, probably three to four weeks, maybe a little longer to follow the increase in cases. So I'm concerned about all of those things. And then they still haven't decided. Everybody's saying something different about masks. So I just think as Dr. Mays said, we've got to sit tight for another month and see what's going to happen, which is really crummy for our parents. It's, it's crappy for the staff. Nobody knows where we're going to be, how we're going to get there. So my two cents worth is if we can figure out to do, and we're allowed to do a distance learning only without endangering our funding, I'd say we don't go back to school until we take a look, maybe in December at the Christmas break, before that of what's going on. I just think we're asking for trouble. I would say we open up, even in a hybrid model, within two weeks, we'll be shutting down due to cases. I mean, that's all I got, really. No, it's just, the whole thing is just messy with no direction.
Um, from other board members, please.
Yeah, I also was listening in on Steve Harrington's meeting today from SCO and found it alarming because the entire, this whole time, I thought we were, we were following the county's orders and what stage we were in as to whether we were going to be going back to school. But he pretty much made it sound like we're supposed to be reopening and going back to school, which was pretty surprising to me because it sounded more like full force, we were supposed to be going back. I know personally, just in the last two weeks, having lots of friends who have had other coworkers pass, like, test positive for COVID nineteen and watching the ripple effect of how that's gone through all the different businesses and how they've had to make contact with everyone and close down and do all the cleaning procedures. So it'd be interesting to hear what exactly our process is going to be if somebody does, if and when somebody does test positive for. I know even in my own business, he had to sign a waiver last week saying we won't leave Northern California. So if we do, we can't go back to our office for two weeks. So it's, I don't know that that's something that we're allowed to do for the school district. But I just thought the different systems that are in place for it are very interesting. And even today, he was saying it's like the right hand is not talking to the left hand and again, talk to your attorney. So.
Yeah, he was pretty adamant about talk to your legal counsel. Jennifer, what did you think about his comments regarding this new law that's been getting pushed by Dob regarding AB thirteen eighty-four? Asking for people to write to everybody they can at the state level, asking for ten months of limited liability. I mean, what he said today, correct me if I'm wrong, was if someone gets sick, the insurance company is not going to cover that. Those people can sue the district without this kind of limited liability. Was that your take on what he said too?
That was my take on it too. I don't know that our insurance covers that, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it does.
No, he said specifically, insurance companies came out and said they were not. So that's got to be like Resig saying, if you've got somebody that gets sick, we're not going to pay for that. The districts are going to get sued. So that was concerning.
It's all concerning because we want to do what's best for our families. And it's, it's for their health and safety, but it's also for their mental health. So I mean, there's so many different perspectives to look at because it affects everybody in a different way.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's been helpful. Jim or Joe?
Yes. Joe, do you want to go first?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's, thanks, Tim. The, I like the same questions. I feel like everyone has. And the same, uh, like internal conversation with myself going both ways on what's it like kids in school, what's it like kids at home? And I think I'm just as confused. And like I said, the last meeting, I just would like to, you know, stick to a plan and just develop a plan, you know? And the distance learning kind of seems like where I would like us, you know, if everyone's on board to focus more on that. I know we, we, we've come up with these, you know, different plans, the different scenarios and bought different supplies and, you know, gearing up. But if we were, if I were to focus more on one than the other, would be distance learning. You know, I just think that that's like the safest bet. And the only thing that is negative is the whole, the funding thing, you know? And, and I don't know if that means we have to have other options or we can't just, you know, if the majority of everyone does distance learning and we have to leave open options for other people. Or if it's, everyone can't, everyone has to have like a hybrid. That's, you know, I'm not, I'm not too clear on that. But I, like for us, it's the, the home, the distance learning is hard, you know? And it's definitely a lot more work and a lot more stressful on everyone. And, but I think it's like safer as far as getting sick. And, um, and it's something that we kind of started and that we can build on. And that's just how I feel about it.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, Joe, I really liked what you said about building on what we've already learned because that's what I hear from a lot of the statements from teachers is that they've learned a lot. They've been creative and figured out how to make it work as best as possible. And I think I really appreciate hearing all that wisdom from the teachers. And, you know, of, of just speaking about the statements that were given. There's a clear consensus from teachers that we should stay with distance learning at least through the end of this year. I, what I would like to know from our lawyers, because I don't understand what the state is doing. I don't know if they understand what they're doing. And I, I'd like to know from our lawyers, what would be the minimum requirements for a hybrid model so that the majority of the instruction can take place through a distance learning? But then there would be a minimal level of in-person learning to meet the state requirements for us to receive ADA. And, and if, you, you know, that would be, I think, the second best choice. The first best choice is if the lawyers figured out, you know, how to reach an agreement with Dr. Mays or in terms of opening up with a hundred percent distance learning, that would be the best in, in my view. But if, if we can't do that, then find out what the minimal requirements for some type of in-classroom, in-person classroom learning would look like so that the majority of the learning would be through the distance model. And if, if the lawyers can give us clear guidance on, on that, then I think that would be the second best choice. And so I, I just, I, I've been saying for months, let's work on developing the distance learning component because we're going to need that no matter what plan we have. And, and we have a lot of teachers who, you know, I was amazed at what they said tonight. Who have figured out how to do this effectively, given the constraints of the situation. And, and we should be building, we shouldn't be wasting any more time. We should be building on their experience and, and drawing from other resources to, you know, I, I remember I said at a previous meeting, let's hire somebody who, who can figure out how to make the distance learning as effective as possible. And my heart breaks for the parents who are facing, you know, this crisis of needing to work and, and, and also have their children at home. And, and it's heartbreaking. All of this is heartbreaking. But what would be the most heartbreaking thing is to, to know that teachers got sick and some died or, or, or students or other staff or parents got sick and, and some died. Because we tried to rush it in, into this without being adequately prepared. And I don't see, in my view, I don't know everything that's going on. But in my view, we are not going to be able to be fully prepared by August. It, it's going to be a rush job. There's going to be a lot of craziness and confusion. And, you know, I mean, I was a kid once and, and I just know that those kids are not going to keep their masks on or social distance. And, um, it, you know, it could become tragic very easily.
So, um, comments from left. In March, I thought we'd be in a different place with the virus that we are today. The virus seems to be escalating when we all thought, or at least I thought, that we might be tailing off. After conversation with one of my sons who works with a lot of the leading scientists at Lawrence Livermore Lab. And, and they have people that work on germs and various things and stuff. It kind of scares me because I don't know in what this virus is going to do. And, and I know we all want to reopen schools and we want to get back to normal. But we can't get back to normal when the virus has taken off. And I was on a Zoom meeting that Santa Rosa Schools organized a good month or so ago with all the school board presidents and members from the School Board Association. And everyone was talking about what, you know, how to reopen and how to do that and how, when things got better. And I raised a question. I said, it all depends on what the virus does. And I don't think the virus is helping us right now. It's not, it's going the wrong way. And I feel, listening to all the, the teachers and my personal feeling, even though it's hard for some parents to do this, is that we do distant learning. Originally, I went, you know, I said, the state colleges are doing this for all of next year. I have a nephew that graduated and he's disappointed that he has to do distant learning. But the health issues are, are significant. That's amazing that the insurance companies are bailing and saying that they won't cover this stuff. Because they're afraid of costs and things like that. So it's sad when, when companies are looking for the dollar profit in that and not for people's care and health. So I think we need to do what's conservative, which is a distance learning. It's not going to be popular with all parents, but it sounds like the majority of staff, or at least ones we heard from tonight, are doing that. I know we can't make a decision on this tonight. This is a discussion item and I thought, Myra, I think you wanted to talk about possibly another board meeting shortly coming up to discuss what, what, you know, we're, the, the, the talk, the time, the clock is ticking. And before you know it, here we are, July seventh. It'll be August seventh. And then August, when do we start? The fourteenth?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. So I mean, that'll be here before we know it. So I think we have to, I think we have to have another meeting and, and, and come up with an action item for a decision.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, one of the other interesting things that Steve Harrington said today was, and Jennifer, I'm sure you picked up on it too. One of his slides said, oh, why do we need to open schools? And his answer was, I'm, I'm not paraphrasing here, but it was basically reduced parent workflow equals high unemployment, which equals less pit, which means we're going to have a shortfall next year and it's going to be terrible. So we have to open schools so parents can go to work, so we can increase the tax base. And I just thought, you know, I get that, but coming from a different place of, I don't want people to get sick and die. That's like my biggest, my biggest fear about opening schools. So.
I, I think what I would like, I'd like to hear whatever plans you guys have devised. And been talking and discussing with all of your groups and what the consensus has been.
In ter, in terms of the task force?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, well, you know, we, we started, what we've done as we've gathered input, we're, the first meeting was really a lot of questions in terms of logistics. And then our next meeting was really looking at what, you know, what schedule kind of made sense. You know, we, we started to look at hybrid, although we know that there's You know, we, we started to look at hybrid, although we know that there's definitely, um, you know, I'm just, what I'm trying to do is plan for that next phase, but with, with what I'm hearing, I think we need to dig deeper with distance learning. Um, 'cause we're just in the preliminary planning. It was, you know, looking at schedules, what made sense, and really doing an investigation of what's happening around us. Um, we, we do have districts that have said, which I'm curious about, that have said they're gonna start with distance learning. Um, and, and you have folks that are opening up. So you have a, quite a variety happening out there, and I'm curious to see what other folks are doing. Um, but, you know, but I want, I want the board to know that really, health and safety is a, is a priority for us. We, we do realize that there's a sense of urgency in sorts, in sense of, in terms of communicating with our, with our parents and our families. And, and I, and I have, you know, we have to realize that whatever we decide, it's not gonna be, not everyone's gonna be happy, right? And, uh, we wanna continue to work with our, with our labor partners and to develop collaborative, you know, collaborative plan. And I think that at this point, we really need to seek further clarification on, uh, Senate Bill ninety-eight, in terms of the funding. I think that's critical. Um, and I'm, you know, and I'm wondering if, you know, I think what we can do is with, if you, I, I would like to suggest that if you give us about two more weeks, uh, we can develop, flesh out more of a developed plan in terms of looking at distance learning. And, you know, that's what I think I'm hearing from the board.
Is two weeks realistic, or do we need to make something, I hate to push it, we need to have a decision in a week?
Um, uh, we, you know, it might, it might be possi- might be, my, my worry is getting the word out to the community. That's why I'm saying two weeks.
So we have to have a public hearing in August, is that correct? That's what I heard today, hearing, that we as a board will have to have a public hearing in August. And then, um, our plan has to be submitted by September thirtieth?
Yes.
Yeah, we have to have a hearing, and then we have to approve it or not approve that, um, that thing that Julie was talking about, and I lost my note, where I had it written down, I apologize.
Yeah, the, the-
In replacement of the LCAP.
Right, and it's, and it's the LCAP acronym, but it's a continuity of learning. Um, the, I, the, the public hearing would have to be in September for that plan. But what I would like to do is, you know, get us to, get us to, uh, you know, the governing board to vote so that we can communicate with families. I think that's what's ur- most urgent right now. And giving us a couple of weeks would let me give you time to contact legal and make sure that we're, we're gonna be okay in terms of what we need, what's required for distance learning.
So, and with distance learning requirements, we're also, also gonna have to have, we might be going from distance learning to a hybrid model. You know, so we probably have to have both of those things done, right? So that's what you're saying, that you're working on the hybrid model right now, and getting buy-in and working on the MOUs with the three unions. Uh, but we also need to look at, we might be, we might have our health officers say, "You, you cannot go back to school, uh, until X, so figure out your distance learning plan." So it seems like we need to have both. That we need a distance learning plan to start, potentially. And then we're also gonna need a hybrid model to go in. I just don't see us going from distance to full open. I think it's gonna be hu- uh, distance learning to a hybrid plan to potentially opening schools at some point. So I think we gotta come up with two, right, at least?
Exactly. That, that's been the rec- that's been the recommendation, is really prepare multiple scenarios.
Well, and what I would like to be able to do as soon as we can is, and I know we're, we're not, we're never gonna satisfy everybody, but I think that right now with the cases rising in Sonoma, I think we're looking at a distance learning model, and I'd like to be able to get that to our parents and staff as quickly as we can. Um, August thirteenth is, like, right around the corner. Um-
So Myra's asking for two weeks, so is July twenty-first a good date?
Works for me.
To have another board meeting? It gives you two weeks, is that enough time? But then that gives from the twenty-first of July, one, two, two and a half weeks to, to notify parents.
Yes.
And that, and that involves then getting, getting all the computers out and all that plan, and et cetera, et cetera. So is that-
Well, the, the computers all have to be set up too, the ones, the new ones that are coming in.
Right.
So IT's gonna be working their butts off to get those things prepared and cleaned and loaded, um, with our information to then be able to hand them out.
About working hard.
Along with- along with the IT, how are we with hotspots? And do we know if anything's been set up with SCO? I thought Steve Harrington had said something in one of his meetings, that he was trying to make them a hub for us to get better, um, hotspots.
I think there's been some, some conversation about, um, you know, partnering with Comcast and, um, you know, but I, I do not have the details, I'll have to get back on that. But we did have a report about, um, getting sufficient hotspots. Julie, Julie, is there any other details that you may have?
Um, no, uh, I know Robert Valdivia Gonzalez was going to contact SCO today as well. Um, that kinda came out of the task force meeting, um, to see if we can kind of somehow partner with them, and, uh, again, increase kind of folks' access, especially to Comcast and the, um, the Comcast Essentials, uh, uh, program. So looking into that, and know that we, we will probably, um, need to purchase some additional hotspots as well.
Thank you.
So we're looking at the twenty-first for a meeting, then?
Myra, does the twenty-first work?
Yes, we, we need to, we need to get the notification to the families, so I wanna make that we have-
Can I make one suggestion for that meeting on the twenty-first? Can we start a little later? So in case we do have parents that are still working, um, that might be home, can we start at least at six?
Sure.
Um, you know, I realize that, you know, it's, and then that'll give, if, if, if we do have parents that are working, you know, give them a chance. 'Cause evidently, the numbers, uh, that we're watching grew as the time went on. I don't know if people, uh, were getting home.
Yeah, we had over to, we had about two fifty-six, I think, was the highest I saw. We're still got about a hundred and ninety-four night, watching. I don't know what the makeup is of parents and teachers, but most I've seen watching one of our meetings. So I think that's a great idea, Left, to do it at six. Maybe we'd get even more people who are home from work.
Know how we can broadcast out to all our parents and staff that, you know, to please tune in and, and listen, and/or send us comments. I mean, we, what, do we have a hundred comments or so tonight, type of thing?
Uh, about fifty.
About fifty, okay.
Yeah.
Little over fifty, yes.
Myra, could you, could you send us those comments, including the anonymous comments that weren't read, please?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So is everybody okay with the twenty-first? At six?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question regarding, is it, if we, um, because we're giving them such short notice, is there a way to push the date for starting back? Especially if we do go to distance learning to get, like, have a little extra training for teachers?
We, we could, we'd, um, I think we would have to reconvene the calendar committee and have some discussion. We have talked about, uh, talked about possibly moving, moving a PD day around, maybe to the beginning of the year, to be able to, to provide them with, um, with, uh, with some additional training. Um, but we do have to have that committee agree, I believe.
If we push the start of school forward, wouldn't the end of school have to be pushed out as well to get the number of hours?
To get the hundred and eighty days.
It's a hundred and eighty days we have to be able to do. And, and, um, so remember that the calendar is negotiated, so we'd have to have that conversation.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, Myra and, and board members and everybody, any other questions?
I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, a lot of questions. So I wanna thank everyone for, for everything you're doing in this unknown time. Um, this is by far the most difficult decision in time that I've been, you know, ever faced on the school board, and I'm sure as educators, the same for you. So I appreciate all that you're doing and all the work we're doing, and we'll get there. Um, and hopefully the virus will subside a little bit, and we can calm down a little bit, and, and, and we'll be there. So before we adjourn the meeting, any last questions or comments from anybody?
Uh, Left, I just, I, I wanna thank Myra for all the time she put in before she came on officially on July first, that I, I, I'm just deeply moved by her dedication. Um, and, and I just wanted to thank her for that.
Great, thanks, Tim. If not, then we, any other thing? We will adjourn the meeting, and thanks. And any questions or anything? I'm sure you'll keep us advised as what's going on, and we'll, we'll have more answers on the twenty-first. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye. We adjourn.
Thank you. Good night.